Good evening. It is Tuesday, August 21st at six o'clock and I'd like to call the Forsyth County Board of Education, meeting to order and welcome everybody here, especially the staff that is so good to show up all the time. And at this time, Dr. Bearden will lead us in indication.
Please join me in a moment of silent reflection, please. Thank you, Philip.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have before you an agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Tom and second one Nancy, all in favor? Unanimous? The consent agenda is next. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda or?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nancy, second by Tom, all in favor? Unanimous? There's no public participation? Presentations at this time will be the finance report with Chris Grun. How are you?
I'm good. Good evening. You have before you the July 2018 financials. Go through those. You see the statement of cash receipts and dispersments. Cash at the end of July, a little over, well, fifty point five million. Comparing to where we were at last year was around forty-six million. So similar position to where we were at last year. Year-to-date budget report, again, this always looks funny this time of year because our property tax money hasn't started coming in yet. So when you see it compared to expenditures, it looks really funny. So just keep that in mind.
I think it's always points out when it's this low is why we have reserves.
That's exactly right. That is a very good point. So you see our total revenue is eighteen point seven. Most of that is QBE money. Keeping in mind, intangible taxes, transfer taxes, and title of origin taxes, if you look at the cash receipts on the previous page, we did receive some in July, but the way that works, those are July collections. So they're really June earnings. Or the money collected in July is actually June collections, sorry. So those are actually reflected in the prior fiscal year. So we've already made those entries. So we did receive that money. It's just a FY2018 revenue. Same thing will happen at the end of this year. On the next page, same revenue summary, total expenditures, year-to-date down at the very bottom, third column, thirty-five point six million. Cumperances are always a little higher this time of year. Some things we encumber over the entire year. Like a blanket purchase order for the entire year's worth of expenses. So that's six million. Some of that may be, you know, actually spent, some may not, but that's, again, factoring in the encumbrance in the year-to-date actual puts us about nine point three, six percent. So a little bit higher, but that's typical this time of year as we get schools started. That should start to come back in line. Of course, the first official payroll with new employees will be this month. So we'll have a good picture of payroll at the end of August. So this reflects really last year's, as well as twelve-month employees, but then when we get to August, we'll have a lot better picture for our payroll expenses. That's our first payroll with all the new hires. Everybody will be included in that one. So again, nothing alarming here at all. Good trends. We'll get back to this page when we're, just for a second. It's not on the slideshow. We can give you an update on where we're at for fiscal year 2018. We have budgeted that we would rather be revenues over expenditures about eight hundred thousand. It's looking more like four point three million at this point in time. Again, that's been the trend we've noticed over the last several years. So about a three point five million dollar difference. So that will leave us with a fund balance of around sixty-five point two million at the end of FY2018. Percentage-wise, if you base it on our FY2019 expenditures, about fourteen point seventy percent with no increase to fund balance. We projected about a one point six million dollar increase for FY2019. If you do that, it's lower than fifteen percent, fifteen point one. Again, keeping in mind, when we had the discussion about bond ratings, those are key numbers. The rating agencies really like to see those numbers around that fifteen percent ratio.
Right. So we're right where they.
We're in great shape.
They were right to give us a triple A rating.
And I really feel like that four point three million is still conservative. I was looking at numbers even an hour ago. I think we're ended up a little north of that, but that's a conservative estimate at this time. Should have our final number first part of September. So we're still, still got some receivables. We're recording some money that will still come in. So we're still recording some of those receivables. Next slide is our debt services. This looks a little different than last month. We, SPLOX four has been included on here. SPLOX four is really not paying for debt service anymore. That's strictly project-related now, what we call pay-as-you-go projects. So that money's been allocated to projects. What's paying for our debt service now is our debt service account plus our SPLOX five that's coming in. So this is just more reflective of what's actually happening with our debt service. At the very bottom, you see our total balance, twenty-four point three million. Biggest changes, of course, we received our SPLOX, which I'll talk about a little bit later. And then we also, we have two payments a year, one in August, one in February. The August is strictly interest. The big payment is in February, which is about forty-six million dollars. So this will change drastically. And I know you're sitting there going, well, we only got twenty-four million right now. But well, SPLOX will collect over the next five or six months. As well as once the tax digest is collected, we'll have the debt service mileage will kick in as well. So we're in good shape there. And we do forecast that out. And there's definitely a cushion in there as we get forward with those debt, those debt service payments. But I thought this is kind of gives a more accurate picture of where we're at. It's really, it's just. And you wonder why there are two SPLOX five accounts. One is our, we have in the government investment pool. The other is we've been buying short-term U.S. Treasuries that have been earning a little bit more interest on those.
I saw that flip back and forth on the other slide.
Yeah, and that's something that, we're almost in a position where we can get long-term on those Treasuries, which we can get us a better rate. We're not quite there. We're still doing short-term, but shortly we'll be able to do two-year Treasuries. We'll have that mapped out. So we're getting there. We're in good shape on debt services. On the next slide, you'll see our investment summary. Total investment's eighty-three point three million. Most of this was covered on the previous page. Again, this is where SPLOX four comes in. You'll see we still have thirty point two million, but that is allocated towards projects. General fund of that cash, we have thirty million of those in Treasuries. That actually is maturing. Actually, we had one matured July 31st, but we didn't actually collect the money until August 1st, just due to the nature of getting the money over to the general fund. The other ten million comes due at the end of this month. That's just to put us in a position, as our revenues are still lagging behind our expenditures, where we have access to that money. The plan is to try to map that out and try to get the best benefit of that once we get our tax money in December. So we'll revisit and invest that general fund money in U.S. Treasury. The government investment pool is about caught up with the Treasury market is. There's not a whole lot of difference there, but we're continuing to monitor that, just to try to get the most benefit out of that. The next slide is very positive. This is actually a full year of SPLOX five. First collections was actually, the month received was in August. So you can see for the first year of SPLOX five, thirty-eight point five, six, nine million. Compared to the previous year of thirty-six point six million. It's almost two million dollars higher. So that's continuing to be a positive trend. Everything I've read, you know, the commercial growth is continuing in the county. I expect these numbers to continue to at least stay the same or probably increase is what we're looking at. And again, keep in mind, SPLOX five is now paying, you know, helping with the debt service piece as well. Next slide is our, we didn't have this for June. This is our school cash recap, the money that's actually held at the school level. And you could, the trend is the receipts are going to lag behind this time of year just because school hadn't started. There are some receipts, but the dispersments are definitely going to catch, be higher than the receipts this time of year as we try to get school up and running. And then once, you know, especially at the high school level, once athletics and some of those kick in, the receipts will definitely catch up. So ending balance for our elementary schools, three point nine million. Middle school, one point one million. And then high school, three point three million. And then the next slide, total eight point three million. So again, all that, that and that's, you know, that's just normal trends that we see this time of year. Thank y'all for bearing with me. I've been battling this cold for a few days.
I can sympathize. A lot of that going around. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank y'all. I appreciate it.
Mike Evans on enrollment update. That's unusual to see you.
I know. I'm excited to be here. Kathy unfortunately had to go out of town, but I'm glad to step in. And I really wish I had something more exciting to tell y'all, but we've been on this constant trend for years and we'll go through it. But yeah, there's not much that has changed throughout the years too. Overall, when we're looking at the official state FTE numbers, this is going back to our last FTE count, which was for March. Again, when you're looking at the largest district across the state, we're still far above the growth percentage. It's over three percent right now. Again, that trend has stayed. We've been seeing around three to four percent for several years. And when I actually look back over during the, during the peak of the time around 2006, '07, we were actually about twelve percent growth during those times, which you may recall. So even throughout the recession, we were down, I think the lowest time was still around two and a half percent during that time. So we're still staying consistent with those numbers. Looking at the, all the statewide districts, the percent change along those lines, again, we're still about three percent range. But when you look at the size of the districts as well, we're ranked twelfth for the total percent of amendment change. But clearly the largest district along those lines too.
Yeah, I was reading those and some of them, I was really surprised that even they grew at all, considering where they are. But it's good to see that.
Again, just the same trend history along the way. These are the October FTE history, marks along those lines. Again, easy to forecast the trends along those throughout the years as well. So taking a look at this current year's registration summary, from total new registrations, we had fifty-seven hundred this year, which was a slight increase from the previous year. And then with the kindergarten roundup that we have, that's usually held the end of January through April. During that time, we actually registered over two thousand students as well. Currently, we still have a hundred and twenty-seven incomplete new registrations. Those are folks that have begun the process. They, wavering when they're coming here, they've started it. And the staff has also been calling just to confirm. Sometimes we haven't taken them off the list or not fully because we just haven't heard back from them yet along those lines. But this is normal for the same of the year as well. But I was looking at the previous numbers from other sessions, other years. June appointments, we had a twenty percent increase this year, but that's associated to, we delayed the enrollment or the registration process for this new school year until May. Previously, we allowed them to begin registering for this coming-up school year in March to April to help that going along. But we ran into a lot of conflicts with getting the wrong enrollment dates in there as well. So we actually held off until we had the kindergarten roundup completed and began the registration in May. So that naturally pushed the registrations back into June as well. And the July appointments as well, similar numbers, slight increase from the previous year. Enrollment by grade level, again, I think the most significant number on this one is just the ninth grade, once they're kicking in the high school. We generally see an increase in the high school, the transition years, going into sixth grade, as you know, there's an increase, and then also from ninth grade. And that's usually associated with the homeschool students that are coming in to begin that transition year with middle school or high school. But then also those families that are moving in during that time. But the majority of those are also attributed to the homeschoolers at transition. Similar enrollment trends along the years, these are just the new overall numbers. And this is a breakdown of the students, the new students that come into the school district, where they're coming from. Again, from previous years, very similar, entered from a homeschool, never attended school. That's the majority would be the kindergarten students along those lines. These are the state recorded codes that we end up using. Similar, nineteen percent for entering from another state or country, private school slight increase as well as from another Georgia district too. Again, very similar year to year.
That's. I thought the information was very interesting. When you had the graph, it shows, we know the growth has come over the years, but to actually see it like that.
Right, right. It's very consistent.
It is very consistent. So we know where we're going.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Have an HR update with Dr. Cindy Sloan.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You heard about our students and now the people who are teaching them. I wanted to start by telling you that we have been busy, as you can imagine. A lot of people come in and a lot of people going. I wanted to give a shout out to my staff. They've been really busy since our job fair in late and early March until today. And we've got a lot more to go, but the rush is over. We're also in a good place, so I wanted to start by telling you that. Right now, the only vacancies we have are two middle school teachers, three custodians, seven food service, a half of a testing coordinator position, twelve bus drivers, and one SLP and one IRR parapro. So we're doing, we're in a real good spot, especially when you hear the news about bus drivers across the state. This is our total staff, seven thousand six hundred and forty-three. We've got over thirty-five hundred certified staff, over eighteen hundred classified, and over two thousand substitute teachers. So a lot of staff. This tells you and shows you how our staff has been growing. Three, two years ago, we had forty-nine hundred employees, and now we've got over fifty-three hundred. The certified are the, is the one in blue and the classified is the one in green. So you see we're growing, just like our student enrollment. This tells you a little bit more detail about our substitutes. We have twenty-two hundred fifty-two total, but most of those, over a thousand, are teachers. We have six hundred and thirteen in after-school care, two hundred and ninety-six lay coaches, and two hundred and eighty-nine other substitutes, which is bus drivers, food service, technology workers, and that kind of thing. Our new staff for the year, since June 1, we have hired seven hundred and eighty-seven people. Our new hires for certified, and the reason hires is in parentheses, is because we have some people who work for us. For example, parapros. You see thirty-nine parapros were already our employees, but they moved to a teacher position. So four hundred and twenty-nine brand-new certified employees. Well, as you know, we have no new principals that's come this year, but because we hired and employed our two new schools principals last year. But for assistant principal assignments, we have fourteen brand-new to-the-role assistant principals and eleven moved from one school to another. So there are assistant principal in one school and moved to another position. So twenty-five new assignments.
Didn't we also probably have maybe a secretary here there or assistant, somebody else along with the new principals? We might have hired a little bit ahead, or was that all just this year?
No, we did hire a few ahead. We hired some last year. That's right. Not a great number, but a handful. Yes, you're right. And this tells you a little more detail about our certified hires. The ECE is early childhood, so we have a hundred and thirty-three new positions there. We hired a hundred and eighty-five secondary, and that's six through twelve. The support positions are eight or system-wide positions across the district. Special ed, as you see, has a big piece of that pie. Elementary school hired fifty-five and forty-eight, middle school and high school. Our recruiting effort, our individual efforts paid off well. Forty-six percent of our individual face-to-face efforts resulted in our employment. So our job fair netted thirty-seven percent of our employees, six percent. We had our first-time summer meet and greet in June, and that was six percent. And then college face-to-face recruiting appointments were three percent of our employees. The other are things like word of mouth. They came from other recommendations, that kind of thing. So anything else besides our job fairs fell into fifty-four percent. But as you see, that's a really nice balance. So our personal efforts, face-to-face efforts pay off. Did I go backwards? Our eighteen, nineteen certified hires, they came from, where did they come from? Out of state, eleven percent. Other Georgia districts, and I always am glad to tell you how many we still from Gwinnett and Fulton County. Fifty-four from Gwinnett and thirty-six from Forsyth County. Of course, a few go the other way too, but we have a great number from, from those two systems. And then colleges and universities, our top two are thirteen from the University of North Georgia and ten percent, or ten from the University of Georgia for sixteen percent. Another college, Middle Georgia, Georgia College in the middle of the state, also yields us some good recruits too. Twenty-six percent are, we grew ourselves. There were former substitutes, parapros, or they came back to Forsyth, having gone somewhere else. And then private is everything from private school to industry to other areas. You say we have, we retain our teachers well, ninety-four point four percent. And we've been pretty consistent over ninety-four percent for the last three years. Salary years, this is the people who left us. And as you'll see, those who had five or less years with us, twenty-seven percent of those left us. But you need to know that this pie looks very balanced, because in a lot of systems, that five or less is a great, a larger piece of that pie. So we feel like we're pretty well-balanced. And we're finding that if they stay with us at least five years, we don't lose them for many, many years.
That goes to show you that men are broken and all that support that they get is crucial for them staying.
And in fact, a lot of systems really agonize over that, losing so many their first five years. So we are, we're keeping a good number of those. Any questions?
Good information.
It is good information. It just always makes you feel good when you spend all that time doing what job fair, that it is very worth the time and the energy.
And I'll make an appointment already with all of you to drag those to golf courses.
See what you've got to look forward to best. I noticed we've got some visitors here with their notepads. So is this for a class or?
This is for merit badge for boys.
Okay, well, good. Well, we will stop in a little while and go into executive session, but we will be above our questions if you have any before we go back there. We'll be glad to help you. Any of the board members will come let you know. Okay? Now we go to action items. Middle school number eleven architectural design contract with Mr. Amerson.
All right, we actually started working on this plan with James W. Buckley a year ago. We basically were taking our current prototypical school and we kind of folded the wings into it. Make this work right. There we go. So now what you see is a much more of a square block building with two quarters per grade level. And this building is designed for fifteen hundred students, so it's capacity, much like we expanded South and Riverwatch Middle Schools too. So it's going to be about ninety classrooms, about fifteen hundred FTE capacity at the end of it. So basically where we have it set up is on the main classroom level, we got the sixth grade and those two wings. Captain Moore set as their team effort. So we have the standard math, science, language arts, and social studies in clusters in those areas. And then the connections area on the other part of the wing. And then you see that we've actually separated the gym over a little bit. We had to create some fire buried between there. But we have a very large courtyard area to create that internal campus area. We kind of picked this idea up from the South Forsyth High School to create a large interior courtyard with areas that the band, chorus, art areas can move out to courtyards in those areas.
Also, as to safety, if they have any gatherings or?
I love that it's south. It is so pretty. So nice.
But the main administration area is pretty much the same concept that you saw with DeSana and the other middle schools with our administration, media center, cafeteria in the front building.
So this is very much like DeSana, isn't it?
Well, except you don't have the long, straight classroom wings. We've now taken those long wings, you know, from DeSana to the hallway.
Squished them up.
Well, now they are U-shaped.
Okay.
So you've got the sixth or eighth hallway on two hallways instead of one really long hallway. And the second floor actually looks very much. And this second floor, which you have our seventh and eighth grades upstairs on those floor levels. So anyway, we've worked this far to get our preliminary designs with James W. Buckley, kind of non-gratuitous. But now it's time to get it to contract terms with them. And we have this school plan to go through design development over this year. It'll be an application to the state next August and then begin construction, let construction next fall in October of 2019.
Okay. And it takes two years, right? Be two years for it?
We'd look at the middle schools, takes about eighteen months, but it will vault where we'll open in August 2021.
Before I recommend approval, just to remind folks in the audience, our citizens passed a bond this past spring for two hundred and ninety-five million dollars. And included in that bond was the construction of two new elementary schools and middle school, a high school, and a new facility for our academies of creative education. So now that our bond has passed, you'll see this work coming before the board for approval so we can get the design phase taken care of and then start construction and get those schools prepared to open for our students. So just want to make sure everybody is aware because you're going to see a lot of this activity in the next few months. So with that, I would recommend approval of middle school number eleven architectural design contract.
Is your motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Tom, second one Kristen. Any other comments, questions?
Do you become an honorary architect after all the work you do on this?
I'm a little cutting paste drawing.
All in favor? Unanimous? All right, number two is the Hill Center Education Center GNET modifications.
Okay. The GNets program moved into the Hill Center a couple of years ago that Sarah coordinated. We've got the left-hand wing of the Hill Center. We have a state consultant that oversees all the GNets. There was a lot of issues with where some of these programs were being held. So they did a large survey of all the GNets programs, looked at deficiencies that all of them had. Comparatively, we had very few, but we did have a few issues that we needed to address. And with that, the state approved special financing for a GNets application for schools to make this era. Put together an application, submitted state. Y'all approved that application actually last August. Now with the bond money, we can do the capitalization upfront to get the hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars in that application refunded, reimbursed. So basically, we got about a quarter of a million-dollar project. The big thing is to put in handicap restrooms. That was the old coming elementary schools. Many of the toilet facilities in the wing are little closets with the toilet in there. So we're going to take one of the classrooms out, create a handicap boys and girls restroom area for that area of the building to service. And we're going to upgrade some features in there with some new work. They have the old counters and old sinks that are coming down a lap of data, so they're going to replace the cabinetry, replace the flooring, but in the restrooms, primary, things will refresh.
Can you explain what the GNET program is for?
Oh, Sarah's back.
Yeah, Sarah.
It's our Georgia network for American education, for students who have social behavior disorders. And when they need more services and more intense services, that's where we provide services. About fourteen students, but they go in there for a short period of time and then will transition back to our schools.
Okay, good. I just wanted people to understand that. That was what it's for. Okay.
We've asked Lindsey Pope, Brayfield, Clifford to work with us, not only the evaluation from the state surveys facility consultant, but to put this together. So we had numbers for the state application. And we're now asking them to put the package together for us to put out on the streets and bid the work.
Okay, good.
So with that, I'd recommend approval of the Hill Center Education Center GNET modifications.
Your motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Kristen is second, from Tom. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Unanimous? All right. Number three, Forsyth County Board of Education Resolution Proposal Process.
This is the same agreement that we entered into previously and was recently in 2014. And basically, what the state allows us to do is have several different opportunities for the delivery of construction services. And it could be a design bid build. We use a request for proposal. You can also do the construction management at risk or some of the primary programs that we can adopt to bid our capital workout. We, for years, have used the request for proposals. It gives us a chance to look at the qualifications of a contractor versus the low bid price that many people were familiar with in the old days. Low bid is, wins the contract. So we have had some updates to the state rules that requires that we have to accept anybody and everybody that can build a school, build a building, can now apply to build for our schools. So that would reason, we feel, being able to look at the company and their qualifications. So that would reason we feel, being able to look at the company and their qualifications to do these projects of twenty-five, thirty, seventy million dollars, we want to have a little bit more knowledge of that company coming in here, not a low bid. So we've identified the five main capital projects, most of which Dr. Behr just referred to as, on the bond account, as those that we're going to accept proposals, evaluate the offering, and select those people based on their qualifications. Prices are part of it, but all their financials, qualifications, the construction team is a big part of what we look at with our evaluation.
So I think we've been very fortunate to have so many good contractors to work with us in our schools. It's just good to have this process to go through.
It is. So with that, I recommend approval of Forsyth County Board of Education twenty eighteen resolution for proposal process.
Sarah, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Nate, she's a second from Tom. Any questions, comments? All right, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Got plenty of work to do the next few years, don't we?
Right.
We've been drawing from the last year's.
Sure, you've been busy.
Our last action items concerns our board goals, and if you were listening to the work session last week, we talked about our goals, and as part of the school system, we set our goals that will tie into the strategic plan goals as well. And the ones that we've come up with for this year that we will be discussing approval for are, one, collaborate with all stakeholders to further community's knowledge and support for the school system. Number two, continue to support the integration of personalized learning and social-emotional programs throughout the school system. The third one is advocate for continued and additional funding for the QPE formula, teacher salaries, and school safety personnel, which include resource officers, counselors, and social workers. Additional funding for safety issues should come with the flexibility to determine the best use of funding for the district. And the final one is increase understanding of future community growth plans in relation to how they will affect the school system. So those are the four areas that the board will concentrate on this year, and we want to work with the staff as well as the community to make sure that we are doing everything that we can to support and promote the school system as it is, as well as look at ideas that will lay a good basis for the future. Does anybody else have any comments, or is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion, Kristen, a second from Dora. Any comments, then, everybody?
I think we've done a lot of good work on it.
Discuss it the least we can.
Did we talk about having a process, maybe quarterly, we'd kind of review, maybe add that to our work sessions or something?
We will.
Make sure we're doing it.
On a quarterly basis, and these all tie into the strategic plan goals for this system, which are learning and growth, cultural and climate, and operational excellence. So we want to do our part to make sure that everybody is doing well. All right, all in favor? Unanimous? Okay, thank you. Voice of information, Dr. Behrden?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I believe today was day fourteen for students. Is that right, guys? Day fourteen? Did that sound right to you guys? Want to thank a number of our staff members for helping us to get off to such a great start. Michael Satterfield's here tonight, our director of transportation. As we all know, those first two or three days with new bus routes is very trying in terms of getting students to school on time and home at a reasonable hour. All of that has now fallen into place. We're back on schedule where we should be. And this is the best start we've had in the five years I've been here, so I want to thank Michael and his team. For the people and our public, we transport about twenty-seven thousand kids, Michael, that about right? On a daily basis. And those routes change every year because we're adding new students. And so it is a huge, huge job for our transportation department to get things, no pun intended, rolling as well as they did. But they did a tremendous job, so thank you and to your staff. Bill McKnight and all the folks in maintenance, all the work we did this summer, getting everything ready to go, kudos to you guys. Mike Evans and Tim Fleming are here with technology, tons of work with technology over the summer. All of our devices and connectivity is working really well for students and staff, so I want to thank you. Dual-language immersion, as you know, we started this year at three of our elementary schools. We're going to have a report to the board next month, but our kindergarten kids who are learning another language, learning Spanish, and those three schools are doing very, very well. To my knowledge, very few of them are going home crying at night because it's so tough. But it's a big, it's a big change for us. It's a program that's been accepted very well by our parents and students, and excited for you to get to see it as things settle down after Labor Day. Todd Shirley and his team, the work with our student advocacy specialists, as you know, we hired six new people to fill that role. That is going incredibly well, very well-received throughout our community. And again, we had the great opening for Alliance Academy and Denmark High School. We want to remind everybody, our grand opening for our Junior Achievement Center is this Thursday at ten AM. That is going to be a showcase for our community, and I cannot wait for our public to see it. That will serve our middle school students in the area of financial literacy very, very well for many, many years to go, to come. So a lot of excitement in our school system, and we're off to a fantastic start.
Great.
All right.
Best points of information ever there.
Absolutely. At this time, a motion to go into executive session for laying and personnel issues.
So moved.
Second. Motion from Tom, and second from Kristen. All in favor?